Good evening, I'm David Assad, the Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Fall River. It's 6:00 PM on Thursday, August 19th, 2021. We are meeting at one government center in the atrium pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 38, Section 20, Subsection F. I hereby notify all persons in attendance that this meeting is being recorded with both video and audio devices. Alex Mello, four of a government TV, Alex Mello is recording both a video and audio version. If anyone desires to make an audio, video, or combination recording thereof, please notify me now and I shall make a public announcement of your intention. Present this evening are permanent members, James Corkins, Dan Dupere, and alternate member Ricky Sahady. Christine, have all petitions to be considered been properly advertised and all interested parties notified in accordance with the rules and regulations of the Zoning Board of Appeals and Massachusetts General Law Chapter 48 as amended?
Yes.
I declare the August 19th, 2021 scheduled meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Fall River open for such business as shall regularly come before it. I remind all persons presenting before the Board, including the petitioners or butters, anyone in support or anyone opposed to the petition, that your presentation should be limited to three minutes. Questions and responses must be directed through the Chair. The Board's rules and regulations direct the Board to specifically look for information which supports the petitioner's claim. As such, the petitioner should identify and factually support the basis for the petition. I hereby advise the petitioners and all persons interested that this Board is the Zoning Board of Appeals. This Board's authority exists pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 48 and 40A, not 48, 40A, and is limited in scope and deals with the use of land as regulated by Chapter 86 of the ordinances of the City of Fall River. Additional permits, licenses, reviews, and/or approvals may be required for the specific development and/or use which is the subject of the petition before the Zoning Board this evening. The clerks in the building, planning, engineering, and licensing departments are competent in the discharge of their duties as clerks. They are, however, not lawyers and are not competent to give legal advice. The action taken by this Board has a real and lasting effect upon the title to your real estate. I urge all petitioners to seek competent legal counsel before filing your petitions and after a decision of the Board has been made. For example, there is a city ordinance 2015-11, Section 10-1, requiring site plan reviews. A copy of the ordinance is available at the City Clerk's Office or from the Planning Department. I remind everyone that the Building Inspector is the zoning enforcement authority and you are here this evening because the Building Inspector has determined that your proposed action is contrary to the City of Fall River's zoning ordinances. The City Charter, Section 9-18, mandates that all multiple-member bodies develop and adopt rules or policies for public comment. The Board has adopted such a policy, which in short provides for citizen input on zoning Board-specific matters at the end of the meeting. I believe there's a sign-up sheet somewhere on one of the tables if you want to sign up to talk to the Board about any zoning-specific matter. I disclose that an official copy of the four of the zoning ordinance is available at the City Clerk's Office. If you're here, wait a minute, if you're here for a specific petition, I'll let you speak. This is only if you want to talk about, you don't like one of the sections of our zoning ordinance independent of the petition that's here. So you'll all get the opportunity, I will be asking for who's in favor, who's opposed during the course of any specific petition, but that particular section of our City Charter says if anyone wants to address the Board on a zoning-specific matter, if you don't like the zoning ordinance, if you think there should be a change, those are the types of things that you can address the Board after the meeting, after the specific items are taken. So I just saw the exodus go, so let me stop you ahead of time. I disclose that an official copy of the four of the zoning ordinance is available at the City Clerk's Office. One cannot rely on the online zoning ordinance. I also disclose that a new recodified edition provided by, approved by the Planning Board and City Council in accordance with Massachusetts General Law Chapter 48, Section 5, now with the red grapefruit cover is the official copy. The gentleman to my immediate left is William Kenny, Director of Planning for the City of Fall River, and during the course of the meeting, you may hear me ask if he has any comments or input to any specific petition. I will also make the disclosure this evening that we have, at best, a four-member Board. Two of our members are not in attendance this evening, and I believe on Agenda Item 01, which is the first one, Angel Estrella Molina, 417-421 East Main Street, Lot G1569. This is a matter that was tabled from July 15th, 2021 meeting. It's a variance request to convert the existing commercial building with two existing apartments into an eight-unit apartment building with one off-street parking space per unit in garage below, waiving requirements in the A2 District, lot size 8,320, plus or minus square feet. I cannot listen to that, so that will only leave a three-Board member, so this Board can't listen to it, and it would be, and I think we received some written correspondence from Mr. Dan Agia, who's representing Mr. Molina, I don't see Dan here, to have this matter tabled until the September meeting. Is that correct?
Yes.
Christine, so if any of you were here for that particular item, the Board can't act on it because we don't have sufficient members anyway, and we have written requests from Mr. Agia that this matter be continued until the September meeting. So if anybody came for this in his favor of this petition or opposed to this petition, I'll ask you to come back for our September meeting and the September meeting date, Christine, do you know? September 16th, 2021. Thank you. Yes, ma'am? Go ahead, please.
So to tabling, it's my understanding from calling to office and actually from Christine earlier, as an action of the Board by tabling it, the neighbors or butters are not notified of the new plan in place, and I actually also have the newspaper listing, which is also incorrect, it still has eight units on it. So as a Board, would you be able to send correspondence to the neighbors as well as having the right thing posted? And I know that it's early, this article, this was posted on August 4th. I had emailed the zoning clerk on August 8th or 9th, and it was still the, it was still incorrect, it still had eight units on it. I believe that's six that Mr. Molina is requesting now, but I really feel like the neighbors should be notified, and just for another point, one of the houses on the corner of Slayton East Main was just recently purchased, and those new owners don't know what's going on, and hearing from the neighbor is fine, however, I think an official notification from the City in regards to what Mr. Molina's new plans would be would be beneficial, just so everyone is aware. Is that possible?
All right, so let me try answering everything you just told me. So I cannot listen, and I haven't looked at the particular filing for Mr. Molina. So if there's been a revised petition, I haven't seen it, and that would be something that I think Mr. Kenny, Director of Planning, he took it in and has taken a revised plan on this particular item, unless that was something that was discussed at the last meeting, and I'm looking to Mr. Corkins, who I think chaired that meeting, if that was a condition or something that was made then.
It was a discussion at that time that they made revised, but we have not received as members any revised plans to that effect.
We received them after the meeting.
Okay.
And about time.
So the members have the revised plans tonight. The plans are on record, I believe, with the zoning, with the clerk and the zoning Board. The new publication, and I don't know, I don't know whether or not it was a revised petition or whether or not it's just a set of revised plans. So the petition remains the same, I guess the, what Mr. Agia was doing, what Mr. Molina were doing, is saying, listen, if this is what we want to do, and they'll need permission from the Board at that next meeting. So the original petition continues as it was presented. The request is going to be something that this Board will act on. The Board will either say, yes, we're allowing you to make a presentation with less units than what you originally presented, or they'll say, no, this is what it's going for. As far as giving notices, I defer to Christine again, I don't know whether or not you all the butters will get notice of this.
Because it's tabled, they do not need to be notified yet.
Okay, but it does still get, it will get published again?
It should not.
It should, will not get published again, but it will be posted on the second floor, and it's online, so.
So online also had, which you just explained to me, sir, about the units, like the number of units, I just feel like it's a disservice to the neighbors. That was the request, I had actually made the request to table, just so that way, because they had changed from eight units to six. I felt like if the neighbors should know that there was a change being made, I mean, I don't have a problem going to all of my neighbors, as well as the new homeowners on the corner. I just feel like, you know, I felt like maybe they should have been notified, but I understand whatever the rules are, and I know that by problem that I can speak at your system, but...
No, no, it's fine, please.
But you know, I really think that the change of plans should be...
All right, but the change of plans, that's what they're proposing.
Yeah.
So I guess a couple of things. One, if we know that there's been a, no, the proposal for a change of plans, they have it officially submitted and said, here's my motion, or here's a revised set of plans, so we're changing it, so we, so the original, what did he want to do, eight units? So the original eight units is still before the Board.
It could be approved.
It could, no, it could, yes, it could be approved, that's what's before. What they're, what I'm hearing, and again, I'm not, I purposely am not involved with this particular item, so if the petition, if the petition has come before the Board and say, listen, we want, we're looking for eight units, but listening to the neighbors' concerns, we're now proposing six units, that's something for the Board at the meeting, but the only thing that's before this Board this evening is still the eight units. And if they haven't reached out to the neighbors, then maybe, maybe they're listening to Channel 18 this evening and they're going to hear that maybe they should reach out to you.
Yeah, and I just want to apologize to my neighbors, because I wouldn't have six units on the table.
No, no, don't, you didn't listen to me.
I would have just asked for it to be rejected.
Yes.
If it had have been rejected, then they would have to come back with a new plan, new postings, new...
No, if it was, if it was disapproved, if it wasn't allowed, then we get into the issue of coming back before the Board within two years, they need special permission, they need to redo the whole thing over again.
Yeah.
So you live in the neighborhood.
Absolutely.
It's important for you in what you're doing to come before the Board and let us know what it is, because it will have an impact on the neighborhood and you. I don't discourage you, I encourage you to come before the Board, make the telephone calls to Christine or anyone on the fifth floor in the zoning or the planning department, and keep on topic. Thank you if you tell your neighbors, but anything, the limited rules that we have to deal with, say, if it's tabled, it doesn't have to be republished, it will, the agenda will be posted on the second floor outside the City Clerk's Office at Don McCordula, and, and I didn't realize this, but now that I do, it's also online, so you'll see it there, and you can certainly call Christine during her working hours to ask the question about what the status of the petition is.
All right, thank you, thanks for your time.
No, no, thank you for coming out this evening.
Thanks for coming too.
Yes, go ahead, whoever that is.
If it gets disapproved, whatever, in the name of the, if it gets disqualified, it's approved or not approved?
Sure, I must be getting, oh, can you try that again, a little slow?
All right. When the Board decides whether it's approved or disapproved, and yet, the surrounding neighbors get a notification saying that it's been rejected or approved or...
My understanding is, after the Board makes a decision, there is a summary of all the actions that have taken place, and my understanding is Christine, may I call you Christine? She, she does an envelope, and she mails them out to whoever the butters. So you will get a summary of all the, and not just, not just this particular item, but of all the actions taken at the meeting. And if you don't get it, and you want to know what happened, call. Anything else? Did I see a hand up over here? Not none. All right, thank you all for coming out for Agenda Item 01. So we'll start with Agenda Item Number 1.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to suggest that we take Item Number 3 in case there are people that are waiting and where we'll be tabled.
Oh, I didn't know, okay, so, was there anything else that could table? So Agenda Item Number 3, KAT Management LLC, care of Jeffrey Madeiras Esquire, 627 Main Street, Lot G534, variance request pursuant to Section 86-482 to convert an existing non-conforming structure from a club restaurant into a multifamily, multi-unit mixed-use property consisting of a living, one, and two-bedroom units, two off-street units, and a private executive club lounge in the basement waiving all dimensional requirements, sidelines, and setbacks in a BL District in varying parking requirements if necessary. I don't see Attorney Madeiras here, but we heard written correspondence from him asking that it be tabled.
We did not receive written, we received verbal confirmation if it looks to you.
Okay, so the Board received a tele, telephone call? Telephone call from Attorney Jeffrey Madeiras asking that this particular item be tabled until our September 16th, 2021 meeting because of the lack of a full five-member Board. Is there anyone here that came in favor of this petition? Is there anyone came opposed to this petition? Members of the Board, can I get a motion to table Agenda Item Number 3 until our September 16th, 2021 meeting?
Mr. Chairman, in order to be consistent with established policy, I move that we grant permission for this item to be tabled until our September 16th meeting.
Okay, so we have Jim Cork, Jim, second by Dan Dupere, any discussion on the motion? Okay, all those in favor? Ricky?
Yes.
Ricky Sahady, yes?
Yes.
Jim Corkins, yes. Dan Dupere, yes. Chairman Assad, yes. Agenda Item Number 3 is tabled to September 16th, 2021. So now we'll start with Agenda Item Number 1, Around the Clock Services Inc., care of Mark Levin Esquire, 7981 Thomas Street, Lot K14. Now, it says 96, but it should be 92. It is the Chairman's opinion that sufficient notice based on the street address of 7981 Thomas Street and Around the Clock Services Inc., who are the record owners of the property, under 48, Section 11, proper notice was given, everyone knows that that's the piece that we're dealing with, and it's a special permit request to divide the property into two lots, one containing a six-family dwelling built in 1930, and one lot containing a two-family dwelling built in 1930. Good evening, Attorney Levin, tell us what you'd like to do, please.
Yes. Chairman, Members of the Board, Attorney Mark L. Levin, representing the petitioner tonight, 138 Rock Street, Fall River, Massachusetts. As indicated, these properties were built in the 1930s, and I'm pursuant to Section 423B of the zoning bylaws, I'm requesting a special permit to allow these buildings to be separated onto separate lots. There will be no exterior changes, other than we are going to provide easements for car traffic to back up and to access that, plus utility easements, cross-easements for each of those lots. This comes to you a little bit late, I was not involved with this particular problem. It came to me after a, an attorney called me and said, at the just of my client, that they could not sell Lot Number 2, which is 79 Thomas Street, because they felt there was a zoning violation, because the only thing out there was a plan that was put on record after approval by the Planning Board and approval not required in March of 2001. After I examined it, I saw that also in March of 2001, an out-of-town attorney accepted a deed for Lot 79 based on this plan, and understood myself that a plan by the Planning Board for approval not required does not confine the town or the city to zoning requirements or that this was applicable. So therefore, we're asking for a special permit actually to correct this. Unfortunately, I, the information I have from the attorney that passed it was that they contacted the Building Inspector's Office and said that there was no need for any other action, that it was zoned appropriately, and that the plan was sufficient to allow them to convey the property, as unfortunately somehow either misunderstood that or was conveyed improperly, but it happened. So I'm here to correct the situation because someone already owns one lot, and obviously it's appropriate just to allow separate units to be on their own. The City of Fall River prefers to have separate buildings on their own. Each of them will have their own water and sewage, they'll have their own way to get into the property for access.
Have they already separated them?
I understood they have done that.
But we could, so will there be any problem filing an affidavit?
Not at all.
Okay.
No, I expected, and I told them that was a condition.
You know, I did, and I'm going to look at Director of Planning and ask the question, because I looked at the plan, but I didn't see that the usual endorsement that approval of the plan by the Planning Board doesn't necessarily mean that it's in compliance with zoning.
Not, not that, the former plan that was endorsed. At least I didn't see...
Have you seen a stamp to that effect in the history of this Board?
Yes.
Because I, we just ordered one that was...
That was standard practice, that the former plan doesn't... It used to be, they used to just throw a stamp on years ago, but for some reason...
Yeah, that lapsed before my first tour of duty, apparently, and I...
No, I was just looking for it, because that was standard fare.
Yeah, we're going to go back to that practice.
Again, you know...
It's good notice for people that...
And I'll give you an example. I had a client that bought some property in Brockton, and I hired the former Corporation Counsel in Brockton to do a subdivision very similar to this, and I says, well, I don't know your bylaws at all, I'm not going to Brockton, I don't know the place, I don't know what you have, and he says, you know something? We do it right with the Planning Board. Planning Board endorses it, and we have a bylaw that allows them to make a zoning determination to separate it, and you don't even have to go to the zoning Board. I was pretty quick about thinking about this, and I have the same problem here, but again, this, the attorney that handled the first closing was from out of Fall River, they probably didn't know, they made the inquiry in the Building Inspector's Office, and for some reason was given...
No, but under 86-423B, you can petition the Board for a special permit.
That's correct.
And we can correct it that way, if the Board. So let me see, who's in favor? Is anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Members of the Board, do we have any questions on this particular project? If the Board is inclined to grant...
Is there any intent on establishing off-street parking?
Yes, on the plan...
For the front house?
Yes, the plan has that for the back area, that's why they have an easement in and out, and they will be parking in the back of Lot 1. And they have the ability to come across the back onto Lot 1 to park.
In the back of Lot 1 on County Street?
Excuse me?
On County Street, in back of Lot 1?
Thomas Street.
Thomas Street.
Yeah. And this, I don't have that one.
Thomas, okay.
Yeah, that was something they talked to the plan or about, and they agreed they would put that in there for them. And unfortunately, that was not given in the deed that was needed out, we're going to grant it to them subsequently, so they have that, that ability.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval.
Approval with conditions, affidavit to be recorded, that all utilities have been separated?
Right.
And what was your question about the parking, if we want to make that a condition? It shows up on the plan, Mark, or it's already there? Because I don't see it on...
It does show on that.
I don't see it on this plan.
Oh, all right, it's on the subdivision plan, so...
It's not on here, that's why we asked.
Okay, but that's, in the back of the property, they're giving them the right to, Lot 2 is giving a access easement...
Lot 2's access off that 12-foot...
Right, they're going to have access easement to get the back of their property, and parking will be behind Lot 1.
Access easement by Lot, it's called Lot 2. Lot 2...
Lot 2 to go to Lot 1.
Lot 2 servient for dominant estate Lot 1.
Correct.
No fencing?
No fencing.
Jim, no fencing, except also body of motion?
That's fine, except that...
With those, with those modifications, that's your motion? Do I have a second on Jim's motion?
I'll second.
Second by Dan Dupere, any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. Ricky Sahady?
Yes.
Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Dan Dupere?
Yes.
Chairman Assad, yes. All right, that special permit is granted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number 2, Antonio Martins, 117-125 Carl Street, Lot E978. It's a variance, a special permit request pursuant to 86-423B to divide the premises, leaving one single family dwelling on one lot, one single family on the second lot, and creating a third lot on which to construct a single-family home waiving all area and setback requirements in an R8 District. Good evening, Attorney Frank.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Identify yourself for the record and tell us what you'd like to do.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
And Attorney Frank, you know you only have a four-member Board?
I do, and the client has asked that we go forward tonight. Members of the Board, my name is Arthur Frank, I'm a lawyer with an address of 209 Bedford Street, Fall River, Massachusetts. With me is Mr. Antonio Martins. Mr. Martins owns the land that is before you on the plan, which we have broken out as Lots 1, 2, and 3. Mr. Martins would ask this Board tonight for two specific forms of relief. First, he would ask that you allow him to divide 117 Carl from 125 Carl under 86-423B. As you can see, both, both of those lots would have yard area in the back, they would both have their own driveways. Both of those houses, we estimate, were built sometime in the, either the 20s or the 30s, they are very old foundations, they've been around for a while, and I think they, they qualify for the, the special permit that's set forth in Section B. On the third lot, which is Lot 1, we're asking for just really one waiver. We can meet all of the setback and area requirements for an R8 District, but we're short on the frontage if we point the house out onto Carl Street. If this Board was so inclined and wanted the house rotated so that the front door was out onto Ames Street, then I would have to ask for a waiver of the front yard from 20 feet to 15 feet. There are only two other houses on that section of Ames Street, they both access Ames Street from their front doors, that's where their driveways are. We feel that the, the single family, the proposed single-family home, that the request is really de minimis, it's either a question of waving five feet on the front, front yard by orienting the door towards Ames, or asking for a 23-foot waiver of the frontage onto Carl Street. Mr. Martins has people interested in buying just 117, and his plan is to, would be to sell that. He, 125 Carl, he would give to his daughter, and the new lot would be a home for his son. I believe the first request for the special permit is in keeping with this Board's philosophy and with sound planning philosophy, that you should only have one house on one lot. So at the end of the day, we would have a house on Lot 3, a house on Lot 2, both of those houses pre-existing non-conforming, and then a new single-family home on Lot 1. I believe because of the shape of the, of the lot, and because of the location of the two existing buildings, this Board would be, it would be proper for this Board to grant us the variance either of the frontage or of the front yard setback. If you have any specific questions, Mr. Martins and I would be happy to try to answer them.
So what, 117 is, will have 30-foot frontage, and it will be a lot of 2,400 square feet?
Yeah, that's, we couldn't make it any bigger, because as you see, 125 is right up next to it.
No, no, I'm asking the question, that's because I don't see that on the property line, but it's...
Yeah, it's, it's, it's there, for whatever reason...
And it's got these two buildings on it, so now we're carving it up, because I couldn't find, I was really looking for, for some, some plans that said that 117 was on a separate lot, had a different dimension, but it just seems they're all...
They're all...
One big lot, and they put two houses on it.
Yeah, I think that was all small lots when they first prepared that plot.
And the other one, 125, is the much larger area, which has, I guess, 13,291 square feet.
That's correct.
But that one will have 50-foot frontage, and it's a single family.
That's correct, and it would, and it would have a driveway, it would have a backyard, and obviously we would set up...
That 117 has nothing.
Yeah, it has a driveway, well, it has a driveway, a driveway between those houses. The first, the driveway will stay for the 117.
Eight feet wide between the property line, is that what you're...
I think it's eight feet from the, the edge of the house to the property line.
Yeah.
And then there's, then there's, then there's a, there's some additional footage.
There's four.
Yeah, it's like four feet.
Yeah, so it's possibly 12 feet, but it's crossing over on the other property line. If we, anyway, the petition has really three things, you've got the special permit and the variance. I don't know whether or not the Board or the relief ask can say, step one, grant us the special permit to split it into 117 from 125, and now act on the variance request for Lot Number 1 to create it. I think it's all, I think it's all one package that we have to act on. I think it's all, I think it's all one package that we have to act on.
I'll take...
No, no, I'm just, I'm just, I've been trying, I've been dealing with this one all day, trying to figure out how to approach it, and I, every time I look at the plan, I just get...
It's not, it's not your typical...
No, it's not. All right, that's my, those are my initial comments. Let's see if any of the other board members have anything to say, and we'll see what Mr. Kenny, Director of Planning, has to say about this one. Dan, anything?
I just want to stay with that.
Ricky?
No.
Jim? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Okay, I'm gonna start over here, and I'm gonna, from my right to my left. Sir, identify yourself and tell me what your position is on this.
My name is Ron Falcone, property owner at one-oh-six Carl Street. I've been a lifelong resident of the neighborhood. Unfortunately, I think the proposed lot division is something that I have to oppose, maybe one off time.
You said one-oh-six or one-eleven?
One-oh-six.
Okay. Ronnie Falcone?
Ronnie.
We're in this one-eleven.
Yep, I'm in one-eleven.
My name's Ronald Falco, I'm at four-eleven.
Okay, no, I'm just looking at the plan, I'm just trying to figure out. Please continue, go ahead.
No, no worries at all. So unfortunately, twenty-four hundred square feet on one single lot, a really tight space. There is limited backyard there, if any at all. No space for people, I don't even know if they can legally have a grill in their backyard, it's so tight. Also, on top of that, I know that that property has been plagued with water problems over the years, where that property has flooded out several times. Building in that lot, I don't know where that water's gonna go. Is that just gonna spread to the rest of the houses? I'm a little concerned. Being a property owner from, for the last, it was two thousand nine I purchased that property, you know, with the housing values going up, I've had several opportunities to possibly sell and try to cash in on that, but being a neighborhood, which it is, and kind of a property that has a lot of families there, you know, I just, this doesn't seem like the right thing for that particular lot.
Thank you, Mr. Falcone, thank you. Madam?
My name is Diane Falcone. I live at one-eleven Carl Street, Fall River, and I have for forty-two years. Excuse me, I'm a little...
No, take your time, thank you for coming.
My home is approximately six feet from the first home that he wants to leave twenty-four-hundred square feet with. For the last forty-two years, the same families have lived there, and they've never used that property. They've always gone over to the lot he wants to build on to have any kind of a social event. They never even tried to have a social event back there, because it's too small. He wants to put a third house, and then he's gonna do crooked on the second one besides, where they're gonna end up having to line up in a row to have another party. There is, it is plagued with very bad water issues as well, and, you know, I am also fearful that my property value is gonna go down, and we're going to now be just too congested. It's eight thousand square feet in the area, which means he needs twenty-four thousand square feet to do three homes. He doesn't have that, and that's the way it's been for a hundred years, and I know that my life is gonna suffer if this happens. It truly will. There's no doubt about it. My life will suffer.
Okay.
I do not agree with that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Madam?
Good evening, thank you, everyone. My name is Rachel McGarty. I am the owner of one-twenty-six Carl Street, which is directly across from the petitioner's property. I'm also one of the owners of one-eleven Carl Street as well, the budding property immediately to the side, and I'm in strong opposition. I think it's a little bit deceptive and misleading the way it's been presented to you this evening, that they're just looking for a special permit to put two houses on two separate lots, and then ask for a variance only to waive small components of Lot Three, but not really talk about turning Lot Two and Three, gives us two non-conforming lots in addition to Lot One being non-conforming. So we glazed right over the fact that Lot Number Two would become a non-conforming lot with a very small size in the R-eight neighborhood. I want to bring to your attention, Mr. Chairman, that this, this property has come before the board, come before the zoning board while you were chair as well, and it was unanimously rejected for a very similar request to put three houses on fifteen thousand square feet of land. This is an R-eight neighborhood, eight thousand square feet per property. The twenty-four hundred square foot home of one-seventeen is one issue, but then turning one-twenty-five into a five thousand square feet and allowing eight thousand square feet for the new home is really just tacking those two little properties right in the middle. And it's not consistent with what we've done in this neighborhood, R-eight. It would be a detriment to the neighborhood to take an existing non-conforming lot that doesn't have the required square footage for the two homes and add a third home, which further decreases the lot size for every one of them. I'd like to point out that we don't really have any of the hardship requirements here. We don't have a soil condition, we don't have topography, we do not have shape. This is one big beautiful lot of land. I spent over thirty years in that neighborhood, and I watched as well, while the family that lived there originally for decades used that whole lot for family members and parties and gatherings of the people who lived in those two houses. It is definitely unusual to have the two houses in that upper corner there, but that drives the use of the land. Pools were over there, parties were over there, vegetable gardens were in that section. To take all of that away from those two houses and leave one eight thousand square foot lot with a home that still doesn't conform to all of the requirements, and then leave us with two other further non-conforming, more than they're non-conforming now, I think it would be a detriment to the neighborhood, and I think it's beyond the scope, and I'll just respectfully ask that, under, you know, the scope of the board, that you deny the request, because they are failing to meet the hardship. The only hardship here would be that Mr. Martins is unable to put three houses on a piece of land that is not meant for it. That was a risk he took when he purchased the property, and, you know, as an investor, these are the kind of things that we, that we face. But again, I'd like to point out that nothing materially about the request of putting a third home on that property has changed. It was unanimously rejected by this committee, this board, approximately twelve or thirteen years ago, with you, Mr. Chairman, as well, voting to reject the request to put a third house on this lot of land.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir?
My name is Ron Falcone, I live at one-eleven Carl Street. I've lived there for forty-three years. Houses being very close, there's nothing we can do about that without moving one of them, but it does create a lot of problems. And by dividing it up, it's just gonna make three houses too close to each other, instead of right now, there's only two. The third lot that he would like to create is definitely needed for the remaining house. If he splits the small one at one-seventeen out, that would give the one-twenty-five eleven thousand square feet. It's not enough for two houses on eleven thousand square feet. It's gonna create a problem in the wintertime with parking in snow, during snow and winter times. If there's no land, the kids are gonna be playing in the street, which is gonna make more of a traffic nuisance for us. So I have to oppose splitting that up and building a house. And I'm not sure that there's anything could stop him from splitting it again to four houses, splitting that third lot one more time. So for that reason, I'm opposed to dividing it up. It totally defeats the purpose of zoning R-eight.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else, Arthur, would you like to respond to any of those?
As far as the hardship, location of buildings on a lot is considered a hardship. The buildings have been there at least a hundred years. We can't move the buildings. We can't make Lot Three that much bigger because of where the house is. The only thing that's gonna change is ownership of the houses. It seems to me that what they're saying is that they want whoever owns those two houses to continue to have their parties on the southerly part of an adjoining lot, and they don't want it any other way. But I think we meet the criteria for the special permit, and I think I meet the criteria for a variance. I've got a, I've got a legitimate hardship. I also have a lot that's completely shaped that really doesn't look like any of the other lots in the neighborhood, and from what I can see, there are some smaller lots that probably don't have eight thousand square feet in that neighborhood. So again, I request that the board grant me the relief requested. We'll take the board's judgment on this.
Thank you, Attorney Frank. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to be heard on this particular petition? Members of the board, you've heard what the petitioner has requested. I guess there are two pieces to it. The special permit under eighty-six, four-twenty-three subsection B with, well, before I go any further, Director of Planning, Mr. Kenny, do you have any comments on this particular project? I don't want, I don't want to stop deliberation midstream if you have something to say.
Yeah, yeah, one comment and one question. I think one of the goals of the zoning schemes...
Could you speak up?
We can't hear you.
How's that?
That's good.
One comment, one question. The comment, I think, is that, sort of keep in mind, one of the reasons behind the zoning scheme is to encourage efficient use of land, and you've got two houses tucked away in the corner of this larger lot, and the question is, is that an efficient use of this parcel? But more important and more to the point legally, I'd just like if Mr. Frank could be a little bit more specific about how you see your client complying with the standards necessary for the special permit under eighty-six, forty-two, three B.
Certainly, Mr. Kenny. As I read Section B, dwellings have to be continuously in existence since nineteen fifty-four, and my client...
And do you satisfy that?
I believe we did. Mr. Martins can tell you about the size, the size and type of the foundation, what he's found in the house since he's owned it. I didn't check the sandborne map, but I would have to think that if they have a sandborne map for that neighborhood, those houses are gonna be on it. We're gonna put them on separate lots. There are gonna be separate utilities. There's gonna be parking. There's gonna be separate access, and there's gonna be some yard area for each one. There's nothing in that section of the ordinance that says there has to be any minimums. For instance, if you look at paragraph A, they talk about parcels having five thousand square feet of area and fifty feet of frontage. So whoever drafted paragraph B did not put in any minimum requirements. So this board, that is free to judge each and every one on its own basis. If you think that there's enough area for each of those lots, and we meet all the other criteria, then I think the board can vote us the special permit.
Thank you.
All right, so under eighty-six, four-twenty-three subsection B, the zoning board of the field may grant a special permit for the division of any single lot of record containing two or more residential dwelling buildings existing continuously since nineteen fifty-four, provided they be divided into separate lots, each of which contains a separate residential dwelling building, and the zoning board finds that the division is made in a way to maximize the use of the proposed lots, specifically access, parking, and yard area. So that's the standard under B. I was looking for, but I didn't see them in here, Arthur, the assessors printouts that had that they were...
I might have them, Mr. Chairman.
So that's the, and I wanted to address that just by way of the right to come before the board under eighty-six, four-twenty-three B, to say, "I've got this one lot, I've got two units, two single-family dwellings on them. Can I get a special permit with the standard being less than shape, topography, soil condition, or hardship?" But the transition thereafter to go to the variance now for the lot Number One, you then have to meet all the criteria of the variance of shape, topography, soil condition, hardship, and what's in the public interest. So, but do you have the printouts there? Do you have what years they were?
I have, I have this...
What does it say? What does it say?
For what?
Either one, I don't care which one, one-seventeen or one-twenty-five.
For the area?
No. What year would the buildings built, shows up?
They said built about nineteen hundred.
Nineteen hundred. Okay. Thank you. So members of the board, that's what you've got before you, has, so step one would be, have they met the criteria for the special permit to split the two lots, to split one-seventeen from one-twenty-seven? And do you think that they've made maximized use of the proposed lot, specifically access, parking, and yard area? So if you want bifurcated and say, "Let's do the special permit first," or do you want to say it's a, it's a combination of special permit and variance, but I think to have a consistent record, we should do it sequentially? Special permit, yes. Variance, yes or no? So that's, that's kind of where I am in terms of processing this thing or making the vote on it.
Just to be clear, Mr. Chairman, the option you just presented was that the first vote under the special permit would be just the separation of Lot Three from the combined two and one.
Well, that's the only way I can, that's the only way I think we can deal with it, because...
Yeah, 'cause the special permit couldn't create the third lot.
The special permit could not create the third lot.
Right.
The third lot would have to be created by the variance component of this petition, and whether or not they've met the, all the applicable standards for the variance would have to be voted on, but I think to put them all together, special permit and variance, I don't, I don't know how we get there. So, and I guess if the special permit is denied, then the variance, I guess you can still go with the variance request, Arthur. I think that would be your argument, that if I don't get the special permit under eighty, eighty-six, four-twenty-three B, then I'm gonna make the argument under, under relief under forty-eight, section ten, as a variance, to let me split it into three lots, waiving...
Correct.
Okay. So, so we have to deal with the two components, the special permit and the variance, to either grant relief or deny relief. So even if we deny the special permit, we still have to act on the variance. So, do I have a motion, has they met, have they met the burden under eighty-six, four-twenty-three B, under the special permit component, to allow the split one, one-seventeen and one-twenty-five? If we think they have, then can I get a motion to grant? If we think they have not, then we should get a motion to deny, and then we can move on to the variance. And again, this is, this is not, it needs a unanimous board vote to make it go forward. So, motion to grant, motion to deny the special permit, have they met their burden under the ordinance? Yep?
Based upon what I'm seeing, I would make the motion to deny.
Okay, motion to deny the special permit made by Ricky Sahady. Do I get a second?
I'll second.
Second by Dan Dupere. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, all those in favor? Ricky Sahady?
Yes.
Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Dan Dupere?
Yes.
Chairman Assad?
Yes.
So the special permit is denied. Okay, now, as far as the variance goes, has the petitioner provided specific components of forty-eight, section ten, variance, shape, topography, soil condition, hardship, that would warrant the granting of a variance for three lots, one-seventeen on Lot Three, one-twenty-five on Lot Two, and Lot Number One being created for the erection of a single-family dwelling on eight thousand square feet, waiving, I believe, frontage on Carl Street? I think that was the...
Correct. Also, as a point of order, Mr. Chairman, location of buildings is considered a hardship.
Location of buildings, for the record, we'll take judicial notice that that was in fact, the location of the buildings is in fact a hardship.
Thank you.
Okay. So now with those things, do we have a motion to grant, motion to deny? Have they met the burden, or have they not?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a, I'll make a motion to deny.
Dan Dupere, motion to deny. I have a second.
Second.
Second, Ricky Sahady. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Ricky Sahady?
This is motion to deny.
Motion to deny the variance.
Yes.
Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Dan Dupere?
Yes.
Chairman Assad?
Yes.
Okay, so this petition, variance and special permit have been denied. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for the neighbors for coming out. Agenda item number four, a loft at Lafayette, thirty-four St. Joseph Street, Lot K fifteen-seven, variance request to convert the pre-existing building to house forty-eight residential units, waiving minimum lot area, front yard requirement on St. Joseph Street, and use restriction to permit an onsite managed maintenance office to be constructed in the building in an A-two district. Good evening, Attorney Levin. Just again, let me remind you, it's a four-member board. For any action that requires a full unanimous vote of the board... For any action that requires a full unanimous vote of the board.
Yes, we do. I do understand.
Just want to make sure, that's all.
Thank you. Again, for the boards' record, I'm Attorney Mark L. Levin, law offices at one three eight Rock Street. I represent the lots at Lafayette. This petition is unique and different because it consists of a very unique piece of property. This property had been part of what was the Notre Dame church complex in St. Joseph Mary. And in fact, this particular building and the area that surrounds it was used for the Notre Dame school. The building was built in the nineteen twenties. Now, the residential district that it is in is an A-two. An A-two would allow a building on a lot to contain more than twenty units. That's permitted under there. We would need to have ten thousand for the first unit and two thousand for each unit thereafter. What we have here is a parcel of land that is more than an acre and a third, and contains this unique building, which is three and a half stories and a full basement, a usable basement. The footprint of the building alone is eleven thousand, four hundred and sixteen square feet. All of the footprint within the building, the floor space, is over forty-five thousand square feet. The building requires quite a bit of work, as you can imagine. It's been abandoned in this neighborhood for quite a while. We found the usefulness of this property is not to retain itself to the twenty-three units that we could have as a matter of right, because the building could not support the expenses that would be necessary to use that. You would use half the building up, and half the building would not be used, because you would have to change a footprint, which I guess could be done theoretically. You could put two thousand square foot units, have four or five bedrooms in each unit. You'd have the same amount of people and the same amount of cars that you would have if you had forty-eight units. And the proposal is to have thirty-four studio or single bedrooms, fourteen two- or three-family, and we will put an onsite management office. And that's where we ask for you to waive the use, for this particular use, to have an office there, because with such a big property, my client wants to have onsite management. They want to be able to have maintenance people there at all times. It's a big property, and people should have this. I mean, you find properties that don't get it, and then they get problems. They want to be able to make sure there's a leasing office, that people is there, people are there, the rental's going to be paid, they can maintain the property, and the owners see what's going on in that property to make sure it's not an abandoned and not usable property. Now, the unique part of it is this brick building. I mean, it sits square in the middle of the property, or more or less. It has more than enough parking on either side of the property. Not only does it have frontage on two streets, it actually has a right-of-way in the back of the property that is used by the apartment complex to the north of the property. The neighborhood is all apartment use, that's what the residential uses are. It is certainly unique as far as size and shape. And the uniqueness of this building for being suitable for this property has been supported by a case, and I cited that in my presentation, that written presentation to you, the Johnson versus the Board of Appeals of Wareham, when they determined a forty-year-old wooden-framed church was unique and should be preserved instead of being destroyed. My client could have easily taken the building down, created separate multifamily buildings on this property, which would be far more conservative and cheaper than rehabbing the property. And he could still do that. But if you keep this property, the only way he can afford to rehab, specimens removal, fire code, sprinkler systems, elevator or walkways, whatever they necessarily are under the code of things, it would require a phenomenal amount of money. So this way, they're having the property in such a way that they could keep this unit, keep the building, and put these units in there. Now, again, the board is actually, has a right right now to preserve some unique history of the city of Fall River. This was built around the nineteen hundreds. It's been out there. It was part of the church property. It's a recognizable building when people go by it, and it's a very pleasant building. It's well, the exterior is kept well. The building is a structurally sound building, and it would be terrible to give away some history of Fall River that is unique to Fall River to not have something like this. And the board can make a determination, not only that the uniqueness of the parcel, the, where the structure is on the property, and the structure itself, they can find a hardship that supports the position that it's economically infeasible for this person to develop this property unless relief is given. And I did cite you a few other cases where they determined, the zoning board decisions went to the appeals court, determined that that was a sufficient finding. So I have here, many factors here. I have a unique property. I have an extremely large piece of property. Yes, there are two other pieces that are large in that neighborhood, but all of them are very small parcels, otherwise with multifamily homes. We have plenty of parking. We have two parking places per unit plus extra parking for guests. We have a building that we're going to save. You're going to preserve part of the historic part of Fall River. There is parking, paid parking lots that give proper access, more than enough access for emergency vehicles to and from the property. And I believe that the proposal, as I've understood it, will have, instead of this very flat area that has no plantings right now, they will go to upgrade that to be very consistent to what the parking requirements on Fall River are, to have trees and landscaped areas in this property. I think it's a great opportunity for Fall River to keep something like this. Tearing it down and then building wooden structures throughout the thing, multiple ones that could support that, would be the alternative, unfortunately, my client would have, just because the cost and expense that would be to rehab this. Or the real impractical idea of building a two thousand square foot apartment, which is sometimes bigger than most homes, to have four or five bedrooms in it. Yeah, I guess you could do it. It would be smart, I think, but it's possible. It's the only way you could use this building. So we're asking you to provide to us relief for zoning, which I believe is reasonable.
Mark, can you articulate what exactly, what zoning relief you need?
We need area, frontage, use for the office.
For the office.
Yeah. Apartment uses are fine. We can go more than twenty.
I know you can, but I'm trying, I was trying to calculate, what was the area variance that you needed?
The area, the, well, we have one point three acres of land. It's insufficient to cover the ten thousand plus two units.
Oh, that's, so that's the area that you're talking about, is the ten thousand plus the two?
That's correct.
To get to that.
Per unit. Yeah, we don't have sufficient to cover. We could only calculate out twenty-three units as a matter of right.
Based on that square footage?
On the square footage alone. And then we're waiving the frontage, I mean, minimum frontage, because the frontage gets bigger as you need a bigger lot.
Maybe I missed something. I thought you had the frontage.
One of the usual neighborhood concerns is access to the park and which traffic pattern. How, or where would you anticipate that the curb cuts would be for access to the property for residential parking?
Right now, there are two curb cuts. There was one curb cut down on St. Joseph Street. I was right off of it.
Yep.
At the southeast corner. And that actually was designated, the idea is to designate that as a way out of the property. Emergency vehicles would obviously have the right. And then you have a curb cut on Mason Street, that little jog you see in the plan, that's actually a right-of-way that was created by both the owner across the way and this neighbor to give each other the right to get into their parking lots and cross down into the property over on St. Joseph Street. It actually continues down, but they own the lot. Ownership is just where that section is. Further down is where the easement is for both parcels. And so they would generally, that the idea is they'd come in on Mason Street and.
Exit off St. Joseph.
Exit off of St. Joseph. That'd be how signage would be.
Yeah, that would be the circular.
Yeah, trying to bring it around. I mean, obviously, you have people coming in on one side of the building, you know, they're going to go the path of shortest, you know, least resistance, so they may go out.
But the answer is off Mason Street, because that right-of-way continues for that other building.
Yes, it does.
So that's.
We don't own it, but it's an easement.
No, no, but it's the right-of-way. It's the right-of-way to go in, is that's how you'd be getting in to the St., well, St. Joseph LLC.
That's correct.
To the north.
That's correct.
That's how you'd be coming in, and you'd be exiting on St. Joseph Street.
Right. They both share, I mean, it's a common easement, even though my client owns a portion of it and they own a portion of it, there's a common easement that runs right along the back of the property for both properties.
So, Mark, just get me to, get me to the waiver of frontage again, because as I was looking at the plan, unless I'm missing something, on St. Joseph Street, you've got two hundred and sixty-nine, two hundred and seventy feet of frontage. And on Mason Street, you've got two hundred and seven feet of frontage.
I think the idea when the engineer put this together was that, had you, I guess, divided up the property so that you would have the twenty-three units, you wouldn't have the proper frontage, I guess if you just give a variance on the area.
Listen, I just, I just want to make sure that the variances that you're looking for we addressed, but as I was looking, as I was doing the review, I said, you've got this building, you've got two hundred feet of frontage on both spots. On the A-two district, the minimum frontage is a hundred. You've got that.
You're right.
So what do you need a waiver for?
Um.
Now you get to the number of units, two, ten thousand for the first and two, I get that.
I think.
I mean, the mathematics doesn't get me.
Yeah. I think the idea was that when they had to figure out twenty-three units and divide it up to create those in separate buildings, he thought you needed a frontage waiver. You're probably right. I have more than a hundred-foot frontage on both.
But you're going up, so it's not, it doesn't go up and expand at the same time.
That's correct.
I just wanted to, so.
I think that was the idea, that he was doing that.
On the plan, it only lists relief requested as to allow greater density of apartment units on the site. It doesn't mention frontage there.
No, I don't, no, no. Perfect.
Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, yes, sir.
George Paul on five seventy-five East Manhattan, Fall River.
Yes, sir.
Vice President of the Fleet Neighborhood Association. An administrative question, strictly. I don't have any issue with the number of units, none of that. Who's the owner? Who owns the, who's the?
Your current owner right now, I believe, is the bishop.
Yeah. No, we, my client took title of it just recently.
Oh, he did? Okay.
And, and that would be?
Well, the lots at Lafayette, to trust.
So, so there aren't any individuals named, who's?
No, they're, they're, those are private. I mean, they will be known once they apply for their building permits and everything, but they're, you know, I, I wasn't given permission to discuss who the beneficiary interests are. There are different people that are interested in the property. It's a group of people that bought it for the purposes of development.
Sure. Understood.
You just, June twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one.
There, there, just so you know, they are local people. They've been in business a long time. They have a great track record. I mean.
No, that's, that's actually some of my concern, actually.
The title to the property. Excuse me.
Yes.
The title to the property, I'm looking at your petition, I didn't, is the lots at Lafayette.
That's correct.
And that's who the, and it's owned by?
The lots at Lafayette. Today, it's owned by the lots at Lafayette. It's a trust.
And the trustee is?
I don't have that.
Michael Ameral trustee is who signed off on this?
I believe he is.
Okay.
Currently.
All right. So that's, when I go to the registry of deeds and I look at the book and page.
Yes.
Ten six eighteen one oh two.
Yes.
I come up with the lots at Lafayette, Michael Ameral trustee.
Right.
And that's what I see, and it's.
But you don't have the beneficiaries or not?
Nor do I want the beneficiaries.
Okay.
I'm just asking.
Yes.
The record title.
He's the, he is the trustee at this time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Is there anyone, all right, members of the board, any other questions or any concerns about? Yes, I'm going to get, I'm going to get there. Is there anything that you'd like to ask Attorney Levin on this particular project?
How many bedroom units?
We're going to have thirty-four studio or single, and fourteen two or three, two or three family.
Fourteen, two.
Or three.
Two or three.
Because it depends on where they are on the floor. Some would acclimate themselves to just two, some would be three, depending where they are within the building and where the stairwells and all the rest of it.
When we got to that before, we had dealt with that issue about the size of those buildings, and the size of the stairways, and what you can get out of them, and what the yield would be.
Right.
So that's, I just wanted to make sure, certain that that's what we were talking about.
Yeah.
So it's a total of forty-eight units.
That's correct.
Thirty-four of which is studio, and fourteen will be two or three bedroom.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or studio, single, the first.
Pardon?
The thirty-four, either studio or single, single.
Oh, one bedroom.
They may have a one-bedroom, yeah.
Studio or one.
It all depends how that layout goes.
Okay. Is that Mr. Caesar back there?
Yes.
Yeah, car, please.
My name is Carlos Caesar, I'm the president of the Fleet Neighborhood Association. I'm not against the project. You know, we as a neighborhood, you know, we want to bring these buildings, abandoned buildings back. I'm not at all against it, but I would just like to say is, when is it developed this size, we would like to be contacted. Not that we're going to go opposed to the project, but we have concerns, and we have our answers. We find supporting. We already wrote letters of support to this board for many projects, but one of our concerns is exactly what my vice president mentioned. When we have a problem, we don't have nobody to contact. We don't know where, if it's a single project, a single home, we just knock on the door and talk to the owner. But when it's a big developer like this, and we have an issue, we, we just don't know where to go and who to contact. So, and going for the future, and I know another huge project's going to come in front of this board, and is on another street, a huge mill that just got sold, I'm pretty sure, they, they want to come in the future in front of the board, is, we would like to be contacted. We, just last meeting, we had last month, we have sixty neighbors with complaints, with problems, with questions for answers. So, and I don't blame the developers, because sometimes they're not familiar with the city, but they are in contact with people down from Fall River. And they know that these neighborhood groups exist for something. And they exist to support projects, to, not just to shut projects down. So, that's a thing that I hope that moving forward, big projects like this, when get contacted to lawyers or anybody, they say, wait a minute, that's the Fleet Neighborhood. They have a good, a very active neighborhood association, that would be good to contact them and to get their support. Because a lot of these problems, you know, could be resolved, and the board has a good feedback from the neighbors. So, that's, that's my thing. I, I support it. The building's been abandoned for many years. We need to do something with that building. I just want people to be more open. We, we don't want to shut people down. We just want to be in touch, to help them, because if, if they succeed, we, as a neighborhood, we succeed. And that's what we're here for. So, with that being said, thank you for the, for your.
Thank you. You've got a little bit of time on Fall River Government TV. No, 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 listen. Attorney Levin does lots of work in the city of Fall River.
I've done work with them.
Yeah, you see, that's what I was.
I wanted their lawyers.
But one, one of the pieces of the components of this particular project is to have an onsite management office there. So you will have a presence of somebody there to contact. Part of the, I guess, site plan review, or part of the whole development is dealing with Mr. Kenny's office. So when someone first approaches the city and said, I want to do a development, I know from experience that Mr. Kenny says it's in. do a development, I know from experience that Mr. Kenny says, it's in this neighborhood, you should probably contact, you should probably deal with the neighbors to make sure they're in support or find out what the opposition is to deal with it. Sometimes you can lead that boss to water and sometimes you can't. The fact that it's before this board this evening, there was public notice, you knew about it, you came, you're voicing your concerns or what things you want done, you've got a few seconds of a public service announcement about the Flint neighborhood. But the mechanism to say that we're going to, this board has no authority to incorporate that any neighborhood association, say, listen, you need to talk to the neighborhoods, but at least you know you're on top of the development that's going on in your neighborhood.
No, I have to take the board because I do get notifications.
No, no, I, I do, Mr. Kenny, when he's told developers, listen, it's in this neighborhood, you should talk to the neighborhood association.
No, I understand, but this board's doing a good job, at least now it is known that it's gonna be on the agenda. So if we can make it here, we make it here. But like I, like, like you said, I have a few minutes just to let know developers coming because I know they're coming, we have more projects, more buildings got sold just this month. So they'll be coming in here, would be nice for us to be contacted. So we will come in here together. We will march side by side and, and support the project, we need them to, to help us and we all can work together. And happened before, we even learned, let us for, for the governor to support so people could get tips and, and tax free from the government and everything. We're here to serve and to help. So with that being said, thank you for the, for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Saad.
I just wanna bring up one thing, I, I misread, and I think you did too. It wasn't the frontage width, it was the front yard setback because the building on St. Joseph is within thirty feet, so it's the minimum front yard setback I was waving.
Front yard setback.
Yeah.
Yard setback.
I read my petition, I'm saying, where do I put frontage? It's front yard setback. It's only twenty.
We're not checking.
I think it's only twenty feet there, so that's why.
Okay. So, is there anyone else here in favor of this petition, anyone here opposed to this petition? I'm gonna ask the director of planning for his input, if he has anything on this before we ask the other board members.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Also like to thank Mr. Caesar for his sentiments, I think it's absolutely important that the neighbors be involved and any developer that is serious and thinks about it is, is gonna reach out to the, to the neighborhoods for sure. This particular project, speaking about this project, I think that the hardship is really abundantly clear. This is a building that was built, designed and built as a school. And one way to look at hardship is to look at the structure and say, what is the economically feasible use of this today? Is it obsolete? And designed as a school, chopped up into classrooms, this structure is an obsolete structure and that, that's gonna create a significant hardship. If you wanted to do any renovation to this at all, the economics of it are gonna work against you unless you are able to create a significant number of new units, and Mr. Levin very clearly points that out. Doing the number of units that you're allowed to do, it's not gonna happen. This building is way behind on, on code, it's built in nineteen twenty-nine and probably not a lot of restoration or rehab's been done to it since that time. So from the, an economic point of view, from an obsolescence point of view, hardship is, is clearly established. And, and the relief that they're asking for is, is minimal. And weighing against that are all the great opportunities and great things that this presents from a planning point of view. You're gonna preserve an historic structure that's part of the city's architectural history, you're gonna reuse and recycle a significant amount of materials. And one of the things that we have to think about on all these decisions is that reusing materials rather than carting everything off to the landfill is gonna be environmentally sound and it's the right way to go. And, and by the way, if, if you look at this neighborhood, are you really gonna wanna put, you know, what, five or six split level homes in this, it's, it just doesn't make any sense. And look at what's next door. You have a significant number of apartments in the buildings just to the north and to the east, so this fits exactly into the neighborhood. Key, in my opinion, is you're injecting another forty-eight units a block from Pleasant Street. Take a look at Pleasant Street. Pleasant Street, that whole Flint neighborhood is gonna be the subject of an urban renewal plan that's gonna get a kickoff in maybe a year or so. And one of the things, just by way of background, when you're doing an urban renewal plan, you identify properties that the public, that, you know, you identify properties where private investment is not gonna come without some kind of a public intervention. And sometimes these plans identify parcels to be acquired by the redevelopment agency and then sent out for development. This is a really great situation where the private market's coming ahead of us, we don't have to worry about, is this gonna be something that the urban renewal plan is gonna designate for acquiring? The private market sees an opportunity. And what a great opportunity for the retail folks on Pleasant Street. Pleasant Street needs an injection, it needs help, the Flint needs help. And if you're gonna put forty-eight more units a block from Pleasant Street, I think the, the retail folks, they were gonna pop the champagne bottles, it's a wonderful thing. It's a good thing for the people that are gonna live there too, because we wanna create neighborhoods that are walkable. Now these people are not gonna have to hop in their car every time they wanna go out buy a carton of milk, they can walk over to Pleasant Street, up and down the street to those neighborhoods. And guess what, one thing I wasn't thinking about, isn't there a park about two blocks away from this? The more people that use the park, the better it is, the safer it is, the more the city cares to take care of it. And it's just a great amenity for the people that are living there. So, and, and the other thing is, I think the really, the only reason that he's, the only serious variance issue is a, a use that's not technically allowed, the onsite management. But, you know, isn't that something you really wanna have in this property? And frankly, if the, if the city were to go back and revisit this ordinance, it's clear to me that they would include that as a permissible use in these sorts of situations. So you're gonna fix up an abandoned structure, you're gonna have some new tax revenue for the city, it's gonna benefit the neighborhood, it's gonna be a great place to live, and it's just the sort of thing that we wanna see happening on Pleasant Street and in the Flint. So the hardship is clear, the benefits are even clearer, and I, and I hope you'll, the board will consider this favorably.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the variance.
Any conditions?
Just subject to.
Site plan review?
Site plan review.
Okay. Jim Corkins, motion to grant.
I'll second.
Condition, site plan review. Second, Dan Dupere, any discussion on the motion? Ricky Sadie?
Yes.
Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Dan Dupere?
Yes.
Chairman Saad?
Yes.
That petition is granted, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time, have a nice evening.
Agenda item number five, Armando and Celeste Neves, four fifty-one North Belmont Street, plot S eight twenty-nine, variance request to waive requirements in the G District to add a fourth. Are you okay? To add a fourth residential dwelling unit to the existing three-family dwelling. Okay, we'll just wait one minute, please. Thank you. All right, the board will take a five-minute recess. All right, Alex, we're back on the record, thank you. Good evening, I think I finished reading what agenda item number five was, yes?
Yes.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, for the record, my name is Jeff Tolman, I'm from Northeast Engineers and Consultants with a place of business at ninety-nine South Main Street. I'm here tonight representing Armando and Celeste Neves, who own the property at four fifty-one North Belmont Street. The property that they own is located in the general residence zoning district. The application that was filed is a variance to allow a fourth unit to be added to the dwelling. In October of two thousand and four, the petitioners bought the house. At that time, there was a, a finished basement.
Mr. Tolman, let me just stop you, I just wanna make sure for the record, you know that it's a four-member board, you need all four members to vote.
Yes.
I just wanna make sure I don't want it at the end of the meeting.
Sure.
Thank you. Please continue.
Thank you. Yes, at that time, the petitioners did make some minor changes to the basement, they made some improvements. And basically what they did was they had, they had, at that time, they had two teenage sons, they basically turned it into an apartment for, for their sons to use, which was allowed under the building code to have, you know, to, to be able to use that as an apartment because it was connected to the first floor of the dwelling.
Excuse me, as an apartment or as just a?
Well, as, as an extension of the dwelling, as a second, second story to the, to the apartment on the first floor.
But it's an extension of, of one apartment, so we kept it with three, you didn't, by way of some petition?
Nope.
Some, get a fourth unit out of there?
Um, no, they just, they, they, they made it, they did it as an extension, it was already finished when they bought the house, but they did it as an extension to the first floor apartment that they resided in.
So the first floor apartment was expanded with some additional bedrooms and?
Correct.
With permits?
Yes.
Okay.
So by two thousand and twelve, both of their sons had moved out of the house. They, they, at that time, they made some additional improvements, you know, cleaning the place up, you know, dressing it up a little bit, some painting and stuff like that. And in, in those improvements, basically get it to the condition it's at today. And at that point, they, they started to rent out the basement unit without knowing that they were in violation of the zoning ordinance. So over the course of the next six years, they rented it to three separate tenants. In two thousand and eighteen, the tenant that was living in, in the basement apartment had a plumbing issue and for some reason, they ended up calling the, the building department in the city. An inspector went out and at that time noticed that the, that the apartment was not legal in the sense that the, the bedroom that was being used by the, by the tenant didn't have a second means of egress. The window was too small, it was a typical basement window. So he, you know, recommended that that be rectified, so at that time, the Neves hired a contractor, filed the building permit and installed an egress window in the basement apartment. After that was installed and when they were getting their sign off, I think it came to the attention of the building department that it was not a, a legal apartment because it was a fourth unit in the house that was zoned, you know, in the zone for, for three units. So, at that point, the tenant had left the apartment, they, they ceased to rent it and it's been sitting vacant since two thousand and eighteen. Bring it to present day, the, the Neveses do have some health issues that they're dealing with. So what they are looking to do, since they made these improvements to the basement, and it is in, you know, it is a conforming one-bedroom apartment in the sense that it meets building code, they are looking to move into the basement apartment, which is at the same level as their driveway, which is the way they, they access the house. So what, you know, what we filed this application for is, you know, they're gonna move into the basement no matter what, but now they're gonna have a situation where they're gonna have a vacant first floor apartment that legally is, does not conform to the code. So they simply filed the application to, you know, to add another unit to the dwelling and make it a legal, conforming four-unit dwelling. The hardship that we have here is that the, the topography of the lot being located on North Belmont, on the corner of North Belmont and Hood, you know, Hood Street in that area is very similar to President Avenue, on the other side of North Park, it's a very steep slope. The use in the basement apartment allows them direct access into the basement, I mean, uh, to the driveway, rather than having to climb stairs to get into the first floor apartment. And the laundry that they have now is currently in the basement as well. The, the parking situation on the property is such that there are currently two, two-stall garages located onsite. One of the garages has a driveway with sufficient width and length, if need be, to support the parking of six cars, albeit stacked, but you could get six cars in there. Because it is a corner lot, the parking on street adjacent to the property would be suitable for four additional spots. And then to the, to the south of the, the dwelling is North Park on, on the south side of Hood Street where there's no, obviously no residences, and there's plenty of on-street parking in that location as well. So unlike most areas within the city, in this particular area, parking is really not an issue. So it's, it's our position that the, the petition that's before you tonight, if granted, would not be a detriment to the neighborhood and it would allow the petitioners to remain in their home without having to, you know, to move out or, and it would allow them to use the first floor apartment, which is obviously the primary apartment in the dwelling. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
Now, you know, the hardship that you're really pushing is one of personal, nothing to do with shape, topography, soil condition. It's an existing three-family dwelling in the G District that allows up to three units, five thousand for the first and fifteen hundred for each additional. So you already have a pre-existing non-conforming structure. I believe you that you say they got, had inspections for the unit as it was being developed downstairs. But, anyway, that's.
The.
My, my only comment is just, the hardship issue, it's a, it's in a pre-existing non-conforming, has three units, we wanna expand it to four units, and the hardship that I'm hearing is one of personal hardship for the owners, nothing to do with the building itself.
Well, the topography of the lot is such that the basement unit allows the petitioners direct access from the driveway.
I, I got it, but they, they're the ones that created that whole internal problem for themselves. Go ahead, let's see what other board members have to say about it. Ricky, anything?
No.
Jim?
Yeah.
No? Dan Dupere?
Yes, I'm just a little confused because you're saying that, what's to stop them from just moving downstairs and calling that the third apartment and then the first floor apartment just stays vacant?
Well, they're, they're trying to avoid that. I mean, if you have, you know, if you have a three-family dwelling, typically the, the owner of the dwelling would live on the first floor, it's a very nice apartment, big apartment. They would like to be able to utilize that apartment instead of just, you know, they're gonna have to heat it, they're gonna have to do certain things to maintain it with nobody residing in it. It, it just, you know, it would be, it wouldn't be in their best interest.
You're wrong on the first floor apartment, what they're, what they're living in now.
Yes, yes.
It's the same first floor apartment that they were living in when the kids were there, they just expanded downstairs.
Right, right.
So now they wanna create that downstairs as a separate unit. And we, we heard that they had done that and then it was told that you couldn't do it, yeah.
And, and I have pictures, if you wanna see them, of the basement apartment, if it would do any good.
You can cer- you can certainly show it to the other members, I don't.
And again, I mean, the, the, the situation is such that, you know, they haven't changed the topography of the lot, they didn't, they bought the house in the, in the condition it's in now, it's just such that the access to the basement is on the same level. It would, you know, they have a kitchen down there, they have their laundry down there, they have a. they have a bedroom that meets code, they'd have, you know, a nice living area, so it gives them everything they need.
Mr. Chairman, where this is a non-conforming lot now.
Yes.
Isn't a special permit suffice?
I don't, the petition is for a variance.
Yeah, I know, it's a petition.
Yeah, no, it wasn't an expansion of, I think.
Well, it is an expansion, really, of a non-conforming use.
I think that it needs to be a variance, I don't think it falls into the category of 48 Section 6, as the expansion of the special permit component piece. That was my, what was one of my original reviews or analysis, trying to figure out if that would fit, but I didn't get there, I got to the variance part. But, so anyway, I think I asked, is anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? You heard, you heard the presentation, members of the board, it's on a variance, shape, topography, soil condition, is there a hardship? Is it for public good? I haven't asked the Director of Planning if he has any input on this particular project.
I don't have any comments, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, motion to grant, motion to deny, what do you want to do?
Mr. Chairman, motion to grant.
Ricky Sahady, motion to grant. Okay, do I have a second? Okay, not hearing a second, do I have a motion to deny the motion, deny the petition?
Motion to deny.
Motion to deny, Jim Corkins. Do I have a second on Jim Corkins' motion?
I'll second.
Second, Dan Dupere. Any discussion on that motion to deny? Hearing none. Ricky Sahady?
No.
No. Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Yes. Chairman Assad, yes. The vote being three to one, the petition is denied. Thank you, Jim. Do we have any citizens' input? Mr. Cavalo, yes, sir. No, you can stay right there. Oh, you can come over to the microphone, of course.
Joseph Cavalo, 575 Eastern Avenue, Vice President of Flint Neighborhood Association, Special Projects Director for Green Futures, still the President of the Coalition for Responsible Siding of LNG Facilities. And I bring all of those up, and what I'd like to do first is to publicly issue an apology to Christine, I can't see your last name, so forgive me for that as well. It was a testy conversation, I'm emotionally involved in this particular location and what's being proposed.
What location, sir?
529 Eastern Avenue, which is the former rectory for Notre Dame and St. Bernadette's Church, where the priests that served the parish lived. The plans that I've been made aware of indicate that there's a new driveway, private way, entrance and exit, in between St. Joseph Street, which is a one-way in from Eastern Avenue, and Bedard Street, which is a one-way that empties out onto Eastern Avenue. The Cavalo family has lived at 575-581, there's two doors, Eastern Avenue, it'll be 74 years that we've been there, come December. And over those years, witnessed a lot of accidents, a lot of serious motor vehicle incidents. I almost forgot, because I've had a terrible concussion from an accident, and had a car totaled when I parked right in front of my family's home by a kid who was coming down Eastern Avenue, headed south, speeding, lost control of his vehicle, and hit the rear end of my car and totaled it. And actually, I hit my elder sister's car in front of me. So the proposal seems to be 24 feet wide and 160 approximately, or 180 feet deep, halfway between St. Joseph Street and Bedard Street. So, for folks who are familiar with the area, people heading north on 24, I'm sorry, on Eastern Avenue, headed north, will now be able to cut across, there's no island that would stop them, cut across to get into this particular driveway. And I haven't seen the plans in total, I mean, I have the plans, but then I...
I don't mean to interrupt you, but you're addressing the board as if it's something before the board.
It hasn't come as yet? Is my understanding, or...
Okay, because you're talking, and I'm, I don't have a clue what you're talking about. I know the area, I live in the area, but you're talking as if we had a set of plans and we've looked at it, or we're doing something. But I understand your preemptive strike on this, but go ahead, please continue.
Yes, and that's a, thank you for those words, because that's a wonderful description. I appeared before the traffic board last night, and there hasn't been a traffic study done as yet as well. If you're familiar with that area, it's dangerous to begin with, people don't obey the speed limits, the governor of Massachusetts reduced the speed limits, the one that was posted right near the Vietnam vets memorial pool went from 30 miles an hour to 25, hardly anybody does, even obeys to 30. We even had an incident a couple of years ago, where two Talbot Middle School students in the crosswalk with a crossing guard were hit by a vehicle, you know, with the traffic supposedly stopped. So it's kind of like, preemptive is thank you for that, because it is. I need to have people become as much aware prior to this plan being implemented, that they would put a third roadway halfway between St. Joseph Street and Bedard Street. I saw an accident a few years back, where a car coming out of Earl Street was headed south, cutting across the two northerly lanes of Eastern Avenue, again, no island to stop them, coming across and got hit by a speeding car headed south on Eastern Avenue in the fast-speed lane, if you will, hit it with such force that when I looked out my window, what I saw was a vehicle on its roof, and mercifully, no one was killed, but people were injured.
The plans that you have, you know who the developer is?
Yes.
Have you, well, so I go back to your presentation before with Mr. Cavalo, Caesar. It seems that that's the appropriate person or people to be reaching out to, and if they're not listening to you, then I think you have to appear before every board that they're coming to and make the same presentation. But for this board to listen or try to, at least, you're trying to bias the board when this project gets there, I don't think it's, I don't think it's appropriate for us to be listening to the evidence that you want to give concerning it. I don't know whether you've talked to Mr. Kenny as the Director of Planning, if he knows what's going on, but he's an intergroup part in the pre-filing of petitions, so if there's something that you'd want to talk to Mr. Kenny about in terms of Director of Planning or planning for the city, that's probably, and Mr. Kenny, I'm not trying to give you extra work, but I just think that's...
The work's been done, Mr. Chair. The work's been done. I had a conversation with the gentleman earlier this week for about 20 minutes, and I know Christine talked with him several times this week.
Oh, okay.
And there is, in that area, I believe this board granted a variance for a building in that area for 40-something units.
One of the buildings.
And Christine, am I correct, that's gone through site plan review already? It has, so that's done. They've talked about another building, the 555 Eastern, there's nothing before us on that.
Oh, that's it.
So, nothing before you or before me. And so I told Mr. Cavalo that I had been in that area when they did some work on Bedard Street, the, it was that the houses on the south side of Bedard, and drove from Bedard to Eastern Avenue several times, and made note myself that people heading south on, generally south of Eastern Avenue, you don't get a good view of them coming out of Bedard, and they're going too fast, and that's not necessarily a ZBA or a site plan evaluation.
No, no, it's not, I mean...
But I said this, that, not today, but sometime in the next couple of weeks, I will go out there again, make some further observations, and I'll make it a point to talk to the traffic department to see whether maybe there's some traffic control solutions that can be imposed on this, see whether or not there's other development, there are situations there of speed and traffic control that need to be addressed. So that's what I've done at this point, and I will, and I will follow through on that, but it's not going to be the same.
No, no, I got that, I'm not asking you to do it this evening, I'm just saying that you are probably a very good resource, I didn't realize that there was that communication. But I'm trying to remember when, we had something before the board, and I remember, I think it was Mr. Cavalo raising similar issues as to speed and traffic, and I think the same comment was, we outside of our authority to deal with that.
Well, in a sense, you know, one of the things that zoning controls is health, safety, and sort of things of that nature, and so maybe if you're looking at a situation, maybe that enters into it, I haven't really thought that through, but certainly it's a traffic issue, I've certainly made the representation, and I will follow it to bring that to the attention.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny. I didn't realize that you had that conversation, sir, but what else would you like to say?
And actually, we know who the owner is, and they even received a tax increment exemption just by virtue of the city council granting that. So it's, and the reason that I'm trying to get ahead of all of this is because the owner is Mr. Anthony Cudero, so, you know, who's a major player in the city, I don't think that's news to anybody that's been here for more than 10 years. And I feel that I need to do everything that I can as a citizen, and I have to say too, that I have, I have the address on Eastern Avenue, but I have a P.O. box for my, for my mail, so I get mail in two places, a post office box on President Avenue, that's 02720, and mail, regular mail as well, at 575 Eastern Avenue, which is 02723. Believe me when I tell you, and I don't doubt at all that something was mailed to me about this project, I don't doubt that at all. What I do attest to, and would even sign an affidavit, that I never received it. Now granted that the Postmaster General of the United States right now is, in my opinion, is...
What notice were you looking for, sir?
Well, as in a butler, a notice that these things were going on.
Okay.
So that's the one...
I'm just asking what you're, so it got mailed out, and if not mailed, it was, was it planning board or zoning board?
I think he's probably referring to the variance that was issued on this other property, and Christine, I think you had some information.
No, no, I don't, so zoning specific, so my thought is...
What I wanted to say was, the butlers are notified, and it's advertised, and it's on the city website, and it's posted to the city, and I know that Mr. Cavalo is a civic-minded person, and he knows that he can look at the paper, and probably does every day, so we try four ways.
No, no, the statute provides that, and it's online, and we've complied with it, so I can't deal, and I, it's certainly not the clerk's or Christine's job, or anybody to other, do other than comply with what we're supposed to do under the ordinance. If you didn't get it, there were four other ways for you to know what was going on. So that's the, that was the end of the zoning issue, I mean, that, that's it?
Yes, and, Jeff, I feel like a defense attorney now.
Well, this is the zoning board, and with the citizen input, so talk about zoning-specific issues, not about any specific project.
Understood, and...
So I've given you some long latitude on that, but...
Thank you, and I appreciate that, believe me. And, you know, just to give the backstory, I'm kind of lucky to be here, survived a pretty traumatic automobile accident, hospitalized, skilled nursing facility, you name it. So access to going online and checking which articles are coming up and when was kind of taken away from me.
I understand.
Not by anybody's responsibility, no fault anywhere about that, and I have an extended family that got my mail for me, brought it to hospitals and brought it, picked it up at the post office and all the other things. So I just want to be able to speak as long as I can and address the issue of this road.
Okay, but that's not an item for this evening, you've addressed it, let it come back to the board when it's before the board.
Okay, understood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a question.
Yes, sir.
Because we attended the traffic board yesterday.
This is the zoning board, but go ahead.
I understand, it's just, I'm going to get there. So, they got, they got your exception, so you gave them the, what they requested for, the permit or the zoning.
Who did, not us?
The zoning, they came here, right, and they got, they got a...
I don't know, I don't know, okay.
So...
It's not before this board, it's something we did in the past, it's done.
Yes, yes, that's what I'm trying to say.
Subject to the terms...
What year?
December 21, 2000.
Oh, God. What are you looking at?
I'm looking at the letter that you sent.
Is it a variance?
2000?
Site plan review.
Is it, okay, so that's also not before this board, but...
It's going to...
No.
Oh, this is...
Mr. Caesar, please continue.
So my...
So some relief was granted, you're saying it was from the zoning board?
Yes, yes. So according to the traffic board yesterday, they still don't know anything about this project, so that means they didn't win.
We talked like two days ago, I told them in a couple of weeks, I would get to them.
Yes.
Give me a break!
So, my question, my question is for this board.
Yes.
Is this usually the sequence of the permits for a development is to come here before the traffic board? Or this is...
That's up to the developer to decide where they want to go.
Okay, because...
So this board is the zoning board of appeals.
Okay.
The only things that we can deal with are things dealing with zoning and land use issues that are governed by our ordinance, Chapter 86.
Okay.
If, as a developer, I choose to go to the planning board before I come to the zoning board, that's a decision that their lawyers and the developer has made.
Okay.
If they choose to go to the traffic board before they come here, that they can address what they want at the different boards, there's no sequence that says you start at zoning and end with traffic.
So if the traffic don't approve the curb cart?
Yes.
That, that means that the project don't have legs?
No, probably, I can't answer that.
Which is not going to happen, I can tell you, that's not going to happen.
If they need a curb cut, if they need a curb cut...
Yes.
And they don't get it, somebody will engineer around it. The board, this board, has no authority to deal with, you will get a curb cut, curb cuts are done from the city council, if I'm not mistaken, the curb cut requires city council approval, this board can...
After traffic, right?
But the whole, the whole project, we may address it and say, we want curb put back in, we want on-street parking, city council is the one that has the authority, I think if it's over 16 feet wide, then they have the authority to say, no, we're going to grant a larger curb cut. Traffic department has their jurisdiction, the zoning board, that's not, that's beyond our scope of our authority.
Okay, I was just curious to know the sequence of the things.
The sequence of things, that's strictly up to the attorneys that are representing the developer, and the developer deciding how they're going to do it.
That was my question, thank you.
Is there anyone else that wants to talk or address the board? Okay, so thank you for the citizens' input. We have minutes of the July meeting, I think I reviewed those the other day.
Mr. Chairman, I move waving of the reading...
Mr. Chairman, I move waiving of the reading of the minutes and acceptance of the minutes.
Waiving the reading and adoption of the minutes? Okay, do we have a second on Jim Corkins' motion? Second, Ricky Sahady, all those in favor? Ricky Sahady?
Yes.
Yes, Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Dan Dupere?
Yes.
Chairman aside, yes. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Is there, well, is there any other business that I need to deal with? Hearing none, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Dan Dupere, second. Second, Jim Corkins, any discussion on the motion? Ricky Sahady?
Yes.
Yes, Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Yes, Dan Dupere?
Yes.
Chairman aside, yes, the zoning board of appeals is now closed. Thank you very much for your attendance.